Okay, it is six o'clock on February fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, and I will call this meeting for the Chelmsford Select Board to order. If you're on Zoom, could you check your volume because there's something echoing? Paul?
Yeah, that's me.
Okay.
There you go. You're good.
All right, and when we're all muted, I'll ask you to join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which is our nation under God, with whose justice and we do justice for all.
Okay, first up, we have public service announcements.
Evelyn, you're first.
Yeah, Evelyn, you don't, there's no slide for you, right?
No.
Okay, come on up. Sorry.
I was waiting for you to announce instead of jumping the gun. Well, Happy Valentine's Day to everybody.
Thank you.
So every year, I come before the board so that I can make the announcement that the applications are available for the Arts and Technology Education Fund. And just to give a brief background, in case somebody that's joining us in the listening audience doesn't know what it is, the Arts and Technology Education Fund was created and approved in nineteen ninety-six by a vote of town meeting, and we have an actual bylaw that governs us. We've modified that over the years. We have nine members. We added some more members to that. The superintendent of schools will always be a member of that. We have seven other people, and I think we still have a vacancy on this board. It's one of the easiest boards anybody could ever possibly want to be on because we are not meeting on a regular basis during the year. We usually just meet in April and May, and then at, in the past, prior to COVID, then we would come before this board because it was this board that put forward the warrant article in nineteen ninety-six in order to make those awards. And it also shows the residents of Chelmsford exactly where the money is going because they are the ones that contribute to this particular fund through a tax checkoff on their real estate and their excise tax bills. So excise taxes are going to be coming due shortly, not that we like to pay any of these bills, but if anybody wants to round up or donate any money to that, we don't know who does the donations. It's all anonymous, so it goes through the town treasurer's office, and we do get an accounting of that. The applications this year in the school system are in Google Docs, so Bill Silver, the technology director, has modified the application so that the staff of the Chelmsford Public School will have may be able to have ease in filling out the applications where they don't have to download them the way they had in the past. The only people that can apply for this is the staff of the Chelmsford Public Schools. If, when we had the charter school in Chelmsford way back, they could apply also because they were part of the local educational agencies that are covered under this particular bylaw. The town also has, on their website, has the application in Word, so if they can't get it in Google Docs, then they can get it on the town website. The funds that are provided are for equipment, supplies, a program, an event, and we have very specific criteria. We get all the applications in. The deadline is March thirty-first. It either has to be postmarked March thirty-first, or it has to be stamped by the town clerk or in the town clerk's office. And then we do have our own little mailbox, and we check on that periodically. And then we take and we review all of the applications and choose the ones that fit the criteria the best, as long as we have the funds able to give to those that have applied. It's very exciting to actually see, when we've done the interviews in the past with the applicants, how excited that the teachers and the principals are with what it is they want to apply the money for. And I think that's the biggest reward that the people in the committee have, is when you actually can interview them and you feel that passion that they have for education in those interviews. So does anybody have any questions for me? So just to repeat again that the applications for the Arts and Technology Education Fund are available either through Google Docs on the school site, or they're available on the town website in a Word document.
For anyone who's interested in applying or for the public, do you have a couple of examples of the types of things the money's been used for?
Well, in the past, we've had a number of technology projects that people applied for, and we noticed trends because they weren't in the budget. So we can't supply the money for anything that was cut out of a budget, and we can't do stipends, we can't do a number of things because it would, that would go directly into the pocket of the teacher. We wanted to go directly to the students, and there's, that process is there also on how they get the money. We've had, a while ago, there was a biology teacher that was at McCarthy, and she had got all these buckets, like Home Depot buckets, but they were white, and she wanted to have the money to buy all the supplies to put in them so she could do some field work in her class by, where the book is over at McCarthy. We've done books, and then consecutive years, the same group has applied so they can build on what they already had. So there's a closet, we'll put closet in quotes, it buy 'em, and in there are books, but it took three or four years, and then they had a different system that they wanted, and that was part of a different grant. So there's a number of things in terms of, we've funded some of the music programs. So even though it's not fully funded, they may go to the PTO. There may be some money in their budget, but they need just that little extra to support the enhancement that they need for whatever is in the curriculum that they're teaching, regardless of whether it's music, or it's science, or it's in the technology field. We've had the math field. Before, we had the clickers at town meeting. We had a project, and we talked about having that, and they, we talked about also having the clickers for the town meeting to make it a little bit easier in terms of counting votes. But they were using that in the classroom so that when the teacher asked the question, then everybody was able to answer, not just one that you'd call on, and then that would come up on the board. We've supported special education projects and different things that will enhance the special education department. So there's a lot of different things. I know you only asked for two, and as you can tell, I'm like, I get excited about what it is that we've been doing because that is what my passion has always been anyway, is education. Does anybody else have any questions?
Thanks, Evelyn.
Thank you very much.
Okay, next, Paul, we have the road walk and sidewalk.
Yeah.
Roadway and sidewalk.
At the next meeting in two weeks, on the twenty-eighth, there'll be a presentation regarding the town's pavement management inventory, as well as, which basically would demonstrate the assessment of the town's roadway and sidewalk infrastructure, as well as a plan moving forward in terms of a five-year investment plan. And obviously, we want to hear from the public on that plan. So again, we're just alerting people to either tune in virtually or in person for that discussion in two weeks.
Thank you, Paul. And Ken, do you want to take the next one?
Yes. The Chelmsford Select Board Committee will be meeting on March fourteenth to appoint one representative and one alternative representative of the Neshoba Valley Technical High School Committee for three-year terms, ending March thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-five. The applications are due by March ninth of this year, and they're on the town website at www.chelmsfordma.gov or in the town manager's office. Application should be forwarded to town manager's office, fifty Billerica Road, Chelmsford, Mass, by four p.m. again on March ninth. Thanks.
Thank you. Next up, we have public input. Is there anyone who would like to make a comment during public input? And just a reminder, we need your name and address for the record.
Mike Rigney, nineteen, Billerica Road. I'm here tonight on behalf of the Center Village Master Plan Committee, of which I am the chair. At our meeting last Thursday, we learned that the town and, we believe, the owner of the back lot behind the Fisk House had received an appraisal for that, for that back lot. And I see that there's a, that you'll be going into executive session later tonight to discuss the potential purchase of that land by the town. I just wanted to point out that the two thousand and thirteen Center Village Master Plan has, as one of its recommendations on parking, that the town permanently secure the leased lot behind Centandere, formerly Sovereign Bank. At our organizational or kind of goal-setting meeting last month, we reaffirmed that we, that we would like to support actions to identify, secure, and promote additional municipal parking. Obviously, without knowing the appraisal price or the details of how the appraisal was conducted, we can't issue a recommendation one way or the other for the town, but we did think it was important to come here tonight and urge the Select Board to seriously examine this opportunity to make progress towards a longstanding goal in town. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak during public input?
Good evening. Brian Latina, fifteen, Jesse Road, precinct four for this next meeting, and I guess we're changing to precinct nine, which brings me to part of my reason for standing up. And I know we only have three minutes, which is, isn't in the Constitution, but grievance to the government seems to have a time delay now that we have Zoom. Communication, I walked my area and got some signatures for another town meeting rep to run, and I was very concerned. Last meeting, I mentioned, communication has degraded since the thirty years or so that we've lived in town, and it was clear on people that I spoke to. I was getting in a half-hour communication with them, just asking for a signature. Anger over traffic, Turnpike Road, can't walk on it anymore, so we're walking over on Porter and Muriel. Very upset that we're going to create a sidewalk with easements down Turnpike Road from the huge development we put in and not by the people that have lived there for fifty years. Very upsetting to those folks. When we rerouted traffic, folks on that road noticed that they learned how to go on Turnpike and cut off that corner. So we taught all those people to drive by these folks' houses at fifty miles an hour. Big problem. New project over by Turnpike at the end of Warren has a thirty mile an hour sign in front of their building now because they recognize new people that live there don't know that Turnpike Road isn't a turnpike. Got to slow it down. Other commuting things, they don't know their new voting places. They don't know that the precincts changed. They don't know we have eleven precincts in town coming in April. We need to fix that. Communicate by a postcard or something. There was a lot of questions on that. Folks were upset with their tax rates and how high they went this time. I pointed out that town meeting voted to take away town manager's suggestion of giving back two million dollars to reducing it to one million dollars and putting it into our rainy day fund. That's very upsetting to people, to lose even seventy dollars a year and have that added to their tax bill. Those are some of the communication things that I ran into. Also, regarding our town, we keep going, we're turning into a suburb of Boston rather than a unique community here in Chelmsford. Did anyone here know that Route Three's been name changed by the Department of Transportation? It's the Northwest Expressway. Good grief. I hope you all had a good discussion with the State House down there to call it the Northwest Expressway. I've been around the country, and expressways is not what we see there. It changes a lot. We've become an MBTA community, which allows us to have a fifty-fifty vote on the zoning article that's in our emergency town meeting on February twenty-fourth. You have to have a bus station or train station with half a mile of that place in order to rezone it if we're using the zoning that the governor signed during COVID, when nobody could really have a lot of communication in person, like we're doing. It's nice to see faces again. MBTA community, if we are one, we've got a two-hundred-million-dollar problem. There's my three-minute mark. So if we're going to build an MBTA station, we need to talk about that before we have a zoning change on the, the project that we're doing, a special spot zoning project for in an emergency town meeting in the middle of winter during a COVID pandemic. Finally, to kind of round it out, as a public notice, the Republican Caucus for Chelmsford, our Republican Town Committee, is having its caucus where we decide who we want to vote for and have discussion about the Springfield Republican GOP caucus. Believe it or not, we do have GOP in Massachusetts. It's at seven p.m. this Thursday on the seventeenth of February at the police station, and all Republicans are certainly welcome to attend. Other folks are as well. However, during the caucus and the voting, only Republicans with good standing would become delegates as a voting point. If I can answer any questions, I'd love to. I'm still not sure, as a town meeting rep for almost thirty years, which streets I'm now responsible and an incumbent of now. Believe it or not, I've not received a list of the streets, but I'm an incumbent, so I didn't have to get twenty-five signatures. That's a little concerning to me as a town meeting rep. And one last one, along the political lines, my five minutes. We now will have a new state rep in our community. Precinct, I guess it's called Nine now. Our precinct now covers a portion of Chelmsford that we hadn't covered before. Carlisle, a piece of Chelmsford, seventeen thousand voters in our town, all of Carlisle, a piece of Concord, and a piece of Acton will now be part of this new state reps district. And I haven't heard a lot from, from us internal here about that, but I'm kind of concerned that the biggest voting block here is Chelmsford, so we need to get out and vote. We need to come up with somebody to run from our local community to cover Chelmsford so that Concord and Acton aren't our state reps. This has been a disaster. My own state rep, former state rep for many years, is in prison. So I know how this kind of works, and I'd love to see somebody that's a valued member of our community become a state rep in our community. It's our first chance in twenty years after we, but we're redistricted to four Democrats from one Republican, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Brian. Is there anyone else who would like to speak during public input? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to committee vacancies. Ken?
Committee vacancies. As of February fourteenth, Arts and Technology Education Fund Committee has one three-year term available. Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee has one unexpired three-year term and one three-year term. CCA Advisory Committee has two one-year terms. Center Village Master Plan Implementation Committee has one one-year term. Commissions on Disability is looking to fill one unexpired three-year term. Community Action Program Committee has three one-year seats available. Council on Aging, one unexpired three-year term, one three-year term, and five associate member positions staggered in three-year terms, ending in June of the next three years. Cultural Council has two three-year terms. Holiday Decorating Committee has two one-year terms. Neshoba Valley Technical High School Committee has one three-year term and one alternative member three-year term. Parade Committee, all applicants, applicants are welcome. They're one-year terms, ending each July thirty-first of each year. The Public Celebrations Committee has five seats available. They're one-year terms. Recycling Committee has one one-year term. And the Tree Committee has one unexpired three-year term and one three-year term. If you're interested in serving on a town border committee, please complete an online application available at the town's website, or you can send an email to the town manager's office at tmoffice@chelmsfordma.gov. You can call the town manager's office at nine seven eight two five zero five two oh two, or you can stop by here at fifty Billerica Road and go to the town manager's office for more information.
Thank you, Ken. And just a reminder, if you are interested in the Neshoba Valley Tech High School Committee, it's, the applications are due by March ninth. Okay, next up, we have reports and presentations with George Zaharulis.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the Select Board, George Zaharulis for the record, Chairman of the two thousand and twenty-one Master Plan update. First off, I want to introduce my wife is here this evening, Gail, and it's Valentine's Day, so we hope to get out of here pretty quick. So the purpose of tonight is to refresh and update the Select Board of the final draft plan and the letter to the residents that the committee put together. Making sure I'm on the same slide as you. On January twenty-sixth, we presented to the planning board, and they endorsed the master plan. On January twenty-sixth also, the Planning Board initiated appointments of the Implementation Committee, and then the next step after here is, is a report to the spring annual town meeting. Committee members, in alphabetical order basically, Nancy Arroway from the Planning Board, Ken Lefebvre from your board, William "Bill" Murphy, Citizen at Large, Mike Raisbeck from the Planning Board. He replaced Donald Van Dyne, who stepped down after a short stay on the board, on the committee. Joe Reddy, town meeting representative. Scott Rumel, Citizen at Large. Myself, I was chair. Also Fred Brusso, who was, appeared at every single one of our meetings. He is on the Age Friendly Committee. He provided very valuable input with the information they were gathering for their report, and we shared information from what we gathered from our online survey, and it worked out really, really well. He was, he was an instrumental part in putting this together. Advisors to the master plan was Evan Belansky from Community Development, Northern Middle Six Council of Governments, Beverly Woods, Jay Donovan, and Justin Howard. We were very fortunate to have Beverly and Jay, who just retired from NemCog, the great institutional knowledge. And Vivian Mello helped us with the minutes. We received input from, from Manager Cohen, Lisa Maroni, Business Development, Gary Persicetti, the Water District, the Sewer Department, the Age Friendly Committee, and the Senior Center Director, Conservation Commission. Evan provided a lot of input, BPAC, and the Historical Commission. So the timeline that we followed basically was, Planning Board appointed a committee back in April of two thousand and nineteen. First meeting took place in May. Committee met, we try to meet every second and fourth Thursday of the month. COVID caused us a problem. Four months, we didn't meet. We didn't do anything because we didn't know what was going to happen. But we started getting together again, it was Zoom. Then March nineteen, two thousand and twenty, we had a public presentation, an input session. We ended up canceling it because of COVID. Meetings resumed again in July via Zoom, and June twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-one, we presented a draft to the Planning Board for their input. I attended a couple of meetings for some questions, and we got through those questions and the input from them. And then we met through December two thousand and twenty-one when we completed our work. So what is a master plan? A master plan is a comprehensive, far-reaching plan of action. A master plan is a document and policy guide designed to help communities create a vision of what they want to look like in the future. A master plan makes recommendations to help guide communities, physical development, outlines implementation strategies that address land use issues, transportation, community, facilities and services, the local economy, the environment, and preservation. Master plans are not binding laws, all regulations on their own. Master plan is a guide to create a plan of action for respective parties to implement the recommendations in the master plan, but it's imperative that those respective parties research and obtain additional information prior to implementing the recommendations. It's up, up to if it's, if in the implementation part of it or the recommendation, it's something for Manager Cohen to look at, he needs to do a deeper dive into it, get into the nitty-gritty, the fine details, to see if the town can afford to do it, or is it, is it worth doing? And these are just, these are ideas and recommendations that come forward that we hope that the respective parties do a dig, deeper dive into it. So the meetings, all the meetings started with open session for public input. The first committee update, first thing the committee did was update the sections, the data, and the information within this, within the plan. And then we reviewed the issues and opportunities from the two thousand and ten plan, reviewed the recommendations. Then we identified what was, what were addressed from the two thousand and ten, and then we, we updated issues, opportunities, recommendations from the input from a survey and respective departments, information that were received. As a committee, what we, we started out doing what we call SWOT analysis within ourselves, now strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats. And then we started to talk about public input. We discussed having public input sessions, but COVID prevented that. It was, it was just impossible for us to do the right way. So we created a survey, and we had over twelve hundred responses to the survey.
That's great.
Which was amazing. And not only the, the survey was, you know, fill in the blanks, and you had what's important, what's not important, but it also had a section of where you could write comments in. We had seventy-seven pages of comments or something like that. I think I read all of them, too.
Yes, you did.
And most of those comments, I would say, out of all of them, I would say there was five percent that you would just throw in the trash right away because they were like, just eliminate all the positions in town, and that's not what we were looking for. And really gathered a lot of information out of it, and was, it was really, I was surprised at the number of responses and the comments that were put in, so. And then we, we, the Master Plan Committee had discussions. We updated data for each section, issues and opportunities, recommendations, and then we, we put together a letter to the residents as well, which we did in two thousand and ten, basically outlines our process and our thought, our thought process. So the sections of two thousand and ten and two thousand and twenty-one master plan, we ended up basically keeping all the sections, but we split out natural resources and cultural and historic. We split them, split them apart and created just their own sections. So the principal goals of the master plan, each section had their own goals. I won't read every single one of them. They're up there. They're in the plan. So we, we created some goals within those sections, and then there's sub-goals within those sections as well. So these are the principal goals of, of those sections. Then we, and I know Virginia had attended a couple of meetings. We talked about a vision statement, and the way we approached it was, we actually approached all the sections, and then, once we put everything together, we came up with a vision statement by compiling everything that we discussed, and I think we put together a pretty good vision statement. If you want, I'll read it all. You all have it in front of you. So it's, our vision statement came out, "As Chelmsford will continue to evolve and change over time, and will strive to make such changes in a manner that respects the shared values, needs, and desires of all residents, regardless of age, race, ethnicity, income levels, or abilities. We will make every effort to maintain and enhance the quality of life for all who live and work here by ensuring that the town is safe and attractive. Community character is preserved, and our education system is of the highest quality possible, and the local economy reigns strong and vibrant. High priority will also be given to protecting and preserving natural resources, open space, and towns' historic assets for generations to come. The future success of the town will depend on town government, residents, nonprofits, volunteers, and the business community working collaboratively as partners to address present day and future needs in the areas of housing, municipal service delivery, transportation, economic development, public health, energy, and climate resilience, and age-friendly policies and programs. The town has a strong record of forming effective partnerships and working in tandem to achieve common goals. We expect that this will continue, and are confident that Chelmsford will remain a great place to live in the future." So I think that was, that was put together over several meetings, and I think we came out pretty strong and pretty accurate with how we put everything together in each section. And I think we came out pretty strong and pretty accurate with how we put everything together in each section. So in summary, the Master Plan update, we updated the 2010 Master Plan. It's just a straight update. Format of 2010 Plan did not change. The new issues and opportunities were identified, new recommendations created. Some 2010 issues and opportunities and recommendations remain. Presentation to the Planning Board, June, we saw comments. Planning Board request for approval, which was back in January. Then we're presenting to you, and then Town Meeting, and then the Implementation Committee should be formed. So the role of the Implementation Committee is to alert respective boards and departments of the recommendations included in the Master Plan, not to enforce or engage in actual implementation of the recommendations. So basically, the, the goal is just to say, hey, the Planning Board, you've got some short-term goals here. You know, we'd like you to take a look at them and report back to us. So that way, the planning can stay updated. They gather results and findings of representative parties in order to keep the Master Plan recommendations updated, periodically report back to the Planning Board on the progress of the implementation of the recommendation in the Master Plan. The Master Plan outlines the recommendation, composition of the Implementation Committee. So we, as a committee, we identified, I think it's nine positions, right, Ken? Of who we thought would be a great person to be on that committee to help move this forward, so it doesn't get thrown into a desk drawer and it just disappears. So you should be able to find the Master Plan on the town website, along with the letter to the residents. So that's the presentation. If anybody has any questions, I'll be glad to try to answer them, or gather the information and send it forward to you.
Any questions from the board? You know, it's been a long haul, so.
It's been a long haul.
Everybody's up here.
My second one, and probably my last one, so.
Well, Georgia, having been there, thank you, because you did a great job, you know, chairing the meetings and moving along. And, yeah, I didn't realize what went into this until I sat through this with you. And the fact you've done that twice. And the first time, I understand, was a lot bigger undertaking than this time, so, thank you.
So, thank you.
And thanks to Fred, if he's watching, because he really was fantastic in those meetings.
Yep. Yeah, and you know, even, you know, the two Citizens at Large, they're new to, new to town government. And, you know, Bill Murphy and Scott Rumel did a great job. They brought a different perspective to committee. I mean, we're all kind of, we're here, you know, we're part of this, we do it day in and day out, we take it for granted. But they're new, and they're coming in from the outside and looked at it, and they did a great job. They really did, and I really want to thank, even everybody on the committee did a great job. But those guys, and it's the same thing that happened in 2010. The Citizen Lodge brought a different perspective, and that was Peter Robson. So it's, I think it's important to try to keep people involved, and they did a great job, so.
Yeah, they were, they were strong and not afraid to ask questions. And, you know, they had a lot of great opinions that I think brought a different view to a lot of this. And they didn't have a problem speaking up, so they were two great choices.
Yeah, yeah, no, the board did a great job choosing, so. All right, thank you.
If there's, if there's no other comments, our next agenda item is to appoint a Select Board member to the Master Plan Implementation Committee. Do we have any volunteers?
Mark?
Somebody wants it?
Want it?
I'll do it if nobody wants it. I mean, I've stopped throwing it, so, threw it, so I don't mind continuing, because.
Any, any other?
Oh, I know it.
Is there any other discussion, or does any, I don't think that we need a vote, this is a chair appointment, right? Does anybody else?
I'm fine with Ken having it.
Okay, then I am going to appoint Ken Lefebvre as the Select Board Member Representative to the Master Plan Implementation Committee. Congratulations.
Thanks.
Okay, Paul? Next, we have Jen? John? Hi, Jen.
Good evening, Madam Chairwoman and members of the board. Hopefully John is on Zoom.
He is, he's in the Zoom room. Great, excellent. Can you just identify yourselves for the record?
Sure. Jen Melanson, Community Services Coordinator for the town. So I wanted to start off by thanking you for continued consideration for our ARPA funding request for a supplemental transportation service for the residents of Chelmsford. I'd really like to thank John Bowles for all of the work that he, he and his team have put into developing this proposed program. Somehow, I've become the face of this, but this is really John's. I'd like to remind everyone that this proposal comes from the Age Friendly Initiative, which is an initiative that this board voted to adopt and pledged to support. John serves as the lead for the transportation domain of the Age Friendly Initiative. He and his team, which worked in consultation with Deb Siriani from the Senior Center and Connie Donahue from the Chelmsford Housing Authority, as well as other community partners and area stakeholders. They worked to identify a gap in services and developed this program to help better serve the needs of all Chelmsford residents while fully embracing the spirit of the Age Friendly Initiative to make Chelmsford a livable community for all ages. I became involved with this transportation project when the need arose for someone to oversee the program. We have provided you with a few documents that should hopefully answer some of the questions and concerns that the board had previously raised concerning this proposal. This includes a very conservative sample first-year budget, a list of what I called FAQs based on the questions the board has previously posed to us, and a sample release and waiver of liability and indemnity agreement that's in use by another organization that has a similar transportation program very successfully implemented. And because we're mindful of the limits of the remaining ARPA funds and of the board's enormous responsibility in determining how the funding should be allocated, we have further reduced our funding ask to $100,000. You will see from our estimated budget that this amount would fund the program at level services for almost three years. This would allow us a very generous timeframe to secure additional funding resources to provide for sustainability of the program. Examples of some of those sources of funding can be found on your FAQ sheet. Our goal is to make this program self-sustainable. There are no guarantees in anything, but we feel that with three years of guaranteed funding, we can then concentrate efforts on achieving this goal. Also included in your FAQ sheet is how we address the concerns of liability that have been previously raised. Please keep in mind that this supplemental transportation program follows the model already in existence at the Senior Center. The Senior Center has been providing safe and reliable transportation services for years. Our program simply expands on those services, both in hours of operation and population served, utilizing similar procedures for background checks and training volunteer drivers. John did extensive research into similar transportation programs already in existence, and we have found no safety or liability concerns. Links to some of these programs are included on your FAQ sheet. Another concern that the board had raised to us involves the cost and maintenance of using phased-out town vehicles. You'll see from the sample budget that we've included estimated expenditures for gas and maintenance based on the Senior Center transport program's annual expenses. We believe these estimates to be extremely generous, since we will only be operating two sedans while the Senior Center operates two vans and two sedans. I expect that our costs will be actually lower than what we've indicated on the budget, but as I said, we wanted to be really conservative. If the, if the board chooses to award funding, we conservatively estimate that it will take up to six months to implement our, implement our program. This will allow ample time for the search and hiring of someone to fill the dispatcher position, which, as we've discussed before, is actually more than simply a dispatcher. Our recruitment of volunteer drivers, including background checks and training, and acquisition of software and necessary training. I think we have adequately established the need for our program in earlier presentations to this board. And given that George just spoke before me, I'd like to thank, again, the, the Master Plan Update Committee for their assistance in helping us gain data to support this program. We have the opportunity to begin to address a gap in services for our residents while also fully embracing the age-friendly concept of making Chelmsford a livable community for all ages. Our proposed program also would bring much-needed relief to those members of our community who have been greatly impacted financially by the pandemic, which, of course, was the original intent of these ARPA monies. Thank you once again for your continued consideration of this proposed program, and we welcome any further questions, comments, and suggestions.
Put it out to the board first? Jen, on, on the expense sheet?
Sure.
It looks like your total assumes one part-time dispatcher. And I think previously you had mentioned you might have two, so have you dropped to one now?
Yeah, we, we did that even at the last meeting that we presented at. Because what we did was, we reduced the scope of services to be just from 2:00 PM to 6:00 PM. So 2:00 PM is when the Senior Center services end for the day. So we would pick up at 2:00 PM and provide additional services until 6:00 PM. So by doing that, we were able to reduce the dispatcher position down to one part-time position, which greatly reduced our ask.
And are all the drivers volunteers?
Yes.
I have more questions, but do you guys have questions?
Are you looking to vote on this right now?
Well, I'm going to finish asking my questions, if we could. So in the quest, the frequently asked questions, we talk about, are there other towns successfully running transportation programs? And it says, you cite a couple. Those look like, are those regional transportation programs? They're not like individual municipalities?
Yeah, there are a few individual municipalities that run these programs, but the majority are regional transport programs. And John really can speak to that more than I can, because he's the one that really put the, the research into that. So I don't know if you want to ask him.
Oh, he's here, if you'd like to say anything.
Well, good afternoon, everyone. This is John Bowles, 19 Regina Drive. There are a number of towns that have, the Billerica Senior Center has a volunteer transportation program, as well as Lexington, and a number of other communities. Westford has a transportation program, but they're primarily using full-paid drivers. Actually, what you'll find, it depends on the, the community, whether they have paid full-time or part-time drivers versus volunteer. I would say, though, that most of the programs have used volunteer-programmed drivers because it's a bit cheaper, particularly if you're servicing mental, medical trips to, particularly to doctors' offices and hospitals. Because, as you all know, you may anticipate you're going to be there for 45 minutes, and then there were, tests are going to be ordered, and all of a sudden, it turns into an hour and a half to two hours. And so if you're tying up a driver that's out of town, that gets expensive, especially if you're paying for them as a, as an employee, as opposed to a volunteer.
Okay. And so the insurance waiver that's in here looks like it's for the rider?
Exactly.
Do we, not the insurance waiver, the liability waiver?
The liability waiver, right.
Do the drivers also sign a waiver?
That's a good question, and not a question that I have an answer to, to be honest. I mean, we certainly would model after whatever it is the Senior Center is doing with their drivers. Their drivers are being paid, so it would be a little bit of a different situation for us. But if they're requiring that of their drivers, then we would as well. And I think it would be different, too, if we were using drivers that were using their own vehicles, too.
Yeah, as it turns out, the, the town is providing the insurance because we're using town-owned vehicles. And so that normally drivers would be using, utilizing their own policies for, if they were covering their own cars. But at this point in time, I think Mr. Cohen has spoken to this before, that the, the town insurance program would be, be utilized in any case of a mishap or an accident. It turns out also that the town has a blanket policy as well that, that covers a larger amount. But it's been my experience, and I've talked with perhaps, you know, 20 or 30 different communities over the last year and a half or so. And I've always asked the question, has, has there been any accidents reported during your program? And the answer has been no. They, the, one of the things is that the types of drivers that become volunteer drivers are oftentimes people later on in life, many of them are early retirees. Sometimes it may be a stay-at-home mother or dad that has a few hours a week that they can devote to their program. And since most of the, the trips will be fairly local, you know, within five to eight miles away, people are driving on surface roads rather than highways. And so consequently, it's much safer program. The other thing is it's oftentimes primarily during the daytime as opposed to evening.
So Paul, what does the town's insurance cover if a driver gets in an accident and gets hurt?
Our volunteer insurance covers the liability in terms of the accident, in terms of a vehicle that may be involved in the accident, including our own. It would cover the, any kind of claims against the volunteer driver or the community as a result of the activity. There wouldn't be workers' compensation in this instance, because the drivers are volunteers, so there, there wouldn't be an application of workers' compensation insurance in that case.
What about medical bills for the driver?
Yeah, it covers your standard medical, under our automobile policy. You know, including underinsured, you know, for example, much like you have in your own vehicle, if you have an underinsured operator of another vehicle, that's all covered. And we also have an umbrella policy on top of our general liability and automobile policies.
And do you know what the waiver content is for the drivers who sign a waiver for the Senior Center program?
I haven't seen it in some time, but.
Are they saying that if they get hurt, they're not going to sue the town, or?
Basically, that's what it would be. It would be, it would be, you have an indemnity, now, again, anybody can sue anything, even if you sign these waivers. It's much like sports leagues and other things. In essence, unless there's shown to be willful negligence by the community, you know, you're pretty much covered. But we would, we would get, we would do background checks. We would have training, as well as a liability waivers for operators and drivers in the program.
But someone brings, just, someone brings a case against the town, whether it's a driver or passenger, even though they signed a waiver, you still have to defend it.
Right.
And we still have a deductible of 30 grand, or whatever it is.
Usually it's 10,000.
Yeah, so you still have your deductible of 10 grand per claim, so.
Well, we haven't, you know, we have.
And so we, I guess that's another question then, Paul. We, we have a couple of cases in town that we are defending or potentially defending, where we've been told that our insurance won't cover it. So what is the criteria for what they cover and don't cover? Would they cover something like this if?
Yeah, if it's covered by, what the, what the coverage is, is basically what's in the policy. Like there are named exclusion, like environmental and so forth, isn't excluded. In this case, it's, volunteers are covered, our vehicles are covered, and the activity is covered. And, and so there, I'm not aware of any exclusions. But prior to the commencement of the program, we would notify or ensure of the senior program if it's, you know, and therefore address any concerns that they would have. But I think as was noted in the presentations tonight, these programs are pretty common in a number of Massachusetts communities, so it's not as though we're breaking new ground if this were to be moved forward.
Has Town Council kind of reviewed the documents and the, just from a liability standpoint, to make sure everything is buttoned up if we move forward?
We would if you move forward. I would not utilize counsel unless the resource, use.
That's intended?
Well, yeah, if the board were to move it, but I'm, but I'm not going to do it. And I'm not going to utilize the service of counsel if the board's not moving forward with it. So I've not done a, I've not gone to counsel at this point.
That makes sense, thank you.
Yeah, okay.
And then the dispatchers, we're keeping them at 19 hours, or dispatcher, we're keeping it 19 hours a week, so it's not a benefited position.
Exactly.
Okay, any other thoughts?
I have some thoughts. I mean, I like the program. I like the work that went into it, and I like the answers we got back from both John and. And I wish it was regionalized, or, you know, in conjunction with another town, or towns.
Give us time.
Yeah.
That's what I would say.
I'm going to assume, since you say other towns have had this, they funded this prior to COVID and set these up.
Yes.
So my one comment is, I mean, I like, like I said, I like the program. I think I would rather go through town meeting than come through ARPA funds to see if the town wants a program like this and have it set up that way instead of using ARPA funds.
I disagree with that. I mean, I think they've done an outstanding job to address all the questions and concerns that we have. And this is, you know, absolutely a valid use of these funds, correct?
It's allowed use, sure.
Yeah, allowed use. I mean, it's for three years to get it up and running and to make it sustainable. After that time, maybe they will have an opportunity to regionalize it. Obviously, that's going to cost more money, but, you know, it sounds like they're willing to take that risk right now. So they've been here, what, four times now? And every time have answered, I think, addressed every question and concern that we've had.
Well, Pat, I'm not counting the number of times. We're making sure that we're doing my due diligence before making a decision.
Okay, but that's a fact.
Yeah, that's okay.
So let me, let me say that.
Okay.
I'm done.
I think one of the points that you guys just brought up, too, was that, I guess the other question that we had had was, if, let's say we get this started during the first year, then what are we doing in years one, two, or three to make it self-sustainable?
Yeah, so obviously, we're seeking additional funding resources through grant opportunities, through corporate sponsorships, through private donations, corporate donations, you know, all of the above. I have my finger ready to.
Is that how the towns that have their programs, is that how, and they're self-sustainable that way?
Most of them, most of them are grant-funded.
So they're not pulling from the town's operating budget?
I have my finger on the trigger of a grant opportunity that I can apply for next week if I get a yes tonight. I'm not going to apply for grant opportunities if I don't have a yes from this board. This is a lot of work.
Understood. Thank you. George and Mark?
My question, is the three-year commitment necessary to go forward with this?
You know, it's, it really would give us the time to build up a funding base, you know, to get this program. Honestly, the first year's, a lot of it is going to be a wash. Like I said, it's going to take six months to get this program off the ground and running. Obviously, we're obviously trying to secure funding during that six-month period as well. But the person that we hire in this dispatcher hybrid position, whatever we decide we're going to call it, is going to be responsible for a lot of that as well. So it'll take time to get this person in here and get them acclimated to the role and build the role and.
No, I understand that. I'm just wondering, too, would give time, or how much time would be really required to start to generate numbers against this?
Yeah, I mean, we would be looking to do that in the first year, for sure.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, we're not looking to start in year three, you know, to procure funding for sustainability. We're looking to do that in year one.
So Mark, are you thinking fund 18 months with 18 months in the deferred?
Yeah.
And see how it goes for the first 18 months?
Get the numbers, we've got time with ARPA funds to, you know, fund it again if we want to, or to Ken's suggestion, you can go into a town meeting, I suppose, if you wanted to run it that way. Give you time also to look at other options, if there are any regional options with other towns, adjoining towns.
Yeah.
I mean, new programs, you know, this is, it's kind of more of a pro forma than it's.
Sure.
So you would basically need 60 K for an 18-month time period?
Yeah, 45 to 50, I would say, yeah.
I'm just.
First year would be like 35, 36.
The delta's 36, yeah. Okay, sorry.
And to be honest with you, Board Member Carrada, that's really the impetus behind asking for three years of funding is knowing the knowledge that these funds don't have to be expended immediately in the first year, that we have that time period to extend the funds. So, you know, our plan was to be able to spread it out in that way. So, I mean, if it's, if it's a contingency thing, that after eight months, we look at it again and reevaluate, I'm fine with that. We plan to do continued program evaluation throughout.
I figured.
Yeah.
I think that's a good compromise. But again, you know, every, every new program in town or new position we start, it's usually voted on in a budget at town meeting. And I don't want to usurp town meeting for something like this, but if you're telling me there's a grant pending and you really need a runway here to get taken, you know, to take off, if we could do six months or nine months to get them going.
And the other, the other opportunity is, we get this going now, and then we're able to gather the data to be able to present to town meeting if that becomes an option.
Exactly, that's what you need.
And it's the same thing with grant funders, too. Like these large Mass T grants and things like that, they want numbers behind the proposal that you're giving them. Very few of them want to fund a brand-new, from-the-ground-up.
And this is how we'll get numbers.
This is how we get the numbers.
By getting it started.
Exactly. I'm a researcher, I'm a PhD student, I know how to get these numbers, so.
George, do you have any comments?
No, I'd love to, I'd love to see people get help up there. I mean, I've been up there many times, and I see, I see trucks, cars parked all over the place, and I don't see anybody, you know, coming in. But I'm sure with somebody that's, you know, with her expertise, with Jen's expertise, she could maybe make it happen, but, you know, I think it would take a long time. I really do, but only maybe because of something like that, it may happen more quickly. But I haven't seen, you know, I mean, like, I've been going up there for five or six, seven, years now, and many times I just see the truck, the vans that we got them from the LRTA and things just sitting there, doing nothing, or they'll just, I mean, people have to provide their own transportation a lot of times, so.
If I can, if I can address that, Mr. Dixon, that's part of the reason why we would be expanding across populations, so not focus just on the senior population, but all adult ages in the community that face transportation challenges.
Well, hopefully it would, you know, enhance the use of the senior center as well. I mean, I, you know, I'd like to see more seniors be more active up there.
Yeah, we would, too.
You know, I hate to see people sitting home by themselves and doing nothing, so, I mean, but again, if you can get the, again, maybe employees, that's, it might be another problem, getting, I don't know. I guess only for the.
Yeah, we acknowledge there are definitely challenges.
There are.
Yeah.
And I'm sure, you know, you'll work and overcome them, get a chance. I don't want to be negative because, I mean, there's nothing more important like the youth and the elderly people. I mean, you know, they need help, so.
Appreciate that.
We have Finance Director John Souza in the room, and Darlene Lucy, our Town Accountant, in the Zoom room. I know you guys have given us input on the ARPA funds along the way. Do you have anything more you want to add to this particular request? Darlene shaking her head, no?
No.
Okay, and John saying no. Okay, so where are we in terms of a recommendation?
I mean, I'm fine, I think 18 months is a good amount of time in order to get this thing off the ground, generate the numbers so that you can take this thing further to see if this is, and I think it is, I've actually been involved in one of these before in another town, so I do, I do know how it works.
We would welcome your expertise.
Yeah, well, it's, it was different then. But, you know, I think that would give you some time to get this thing going, find out what the real numbers are, find out, you know, who you, again, who you can get additional funds from, it's a sustainable, is there any other synergies to go with it, and all those things, so that's kind of what I'm thinking.
You okay with that, Ken?
Yeah.
George?
Yeah, I'm, you know, fifty-fifty.
Yeah, Pat?
I mean, I.
Does that make sense?
I mean, I'll go along with that, but I wish we could provide more, I think, especially as a startup, you know, I think they're probably going to need more assistance at the beginning than at the, at the three-year mark, even at the 18-month mark.
Why don't we include in the motion that we are going to hold 50 in the deferred column until we have that data within the next 12 to 18 months?
That would be, that's a good.
Fund 50 now and hold 50, that gets you to about 18-month mark?
Yeah, I think that's reasonable.
And that way, the money is, the deferred money is earmarked and protected for the next 18 months?
It's fine.
Does that, does that ease your concern?
If it does, Jones, it does, yeah.
You know, I will just remark that, that, you know, Mr. Lefebvre made a comment of it being a good compromise, and, you know, we've reduced our ask from 450,000, what we initially asked, so I think that we've showed considerable compromise. But if that, if more compromise is required at this point, then, you know, we've put an awful lot of work into this.
I know you have, thank you.
To come away with.
It's going to take a lot more, too, to be truthful.
It absolutely will take a lot.
I'm sure you're very capable of getting it done, you know? I'm not trying to be negative, but I think it's going to be a lot harder than just trying to get volunteers and, or people working for small amounts of money.
I just agreed to take on an unpaid intern today, and she has no idea what she's getting herself into. Hopefully, she's not watching this meeting.
Pay no attention.
There you go. Good luck.
Do you want to make a motion?
What amount are we doing, 50?
Whatever the board's comfortable with. My suggestion is if we do the 50, we agree that we hold 50 in the deferred.
Okay.
Until we get the data, so that it doesn't disappear.
All right, so I'll make a motion, I'll make a motion that we approve $50,000 for the Chelmsford Supplemental Volunteer Transportation Program and hold 50,000 in deferment for 18 months to see the results from our first investment.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, any more discussion? All those in favor? Aye, 5-0. Thanks very much, Jen and John.
Thank you very much, appreciate all the consideration, and I'll see you within 18 months.
Thanks, John.
Thank you.
Okay, Paul?
Yeah, next on our agenda, Town Accountant Darlene Lucy is on the call, and Finance Director John Souza is here in the room, and they've been handling the procurement of the town's auditing services. And so I'm going to ask John to sort of start the presentation this evening. You have a written summary on the RFP and the proposal in your document, in your packet.
Thank you, Town Manager Cohen, good evening, Madam Chair, members of the Select Board. Take this off if you can hear me a little better. Darlene and I worked in collaboration back in January to issue an RFP to, for three firms that were, have prior experience and are qualified to conduct audits of larger municipalities. And in the background memo that we provided to the board in your packet, you'll note that we've, we sent a request for proposals to three firms, Clifton Larson Allen of Lexington, Lynch Mariney and Associates of Norwell, and Roselli Clark and Associates of Woburn. We received only one proposal back and, from Clifton Larson Allen, and we wanted to note, you know, the cost of that. And we, I, we did contact the other two firms just to make sure that they actually intended not to submit a proposal, it just wasn't a, you know, we contacted them before the deadline just to make sure. And what we found is just generally, they had different reasons. One firm felt that ARPA had added a lot of work to the municipal audit firm's workload, and so that was keeping them very busy, and so they weren't really looking to take on an additional client. They didn't rule out submitting a proposal in the future. And the other firm indicated that they were just not, just weren't staffed at this time or did not want to take on another municipal client at this time, left it sort of open-ended. So we wanted to come back to the board at this time just to give you an update of where we stand. And just you could see, you know, you have a copy of the proposal in your packet, and the, the one firm that did submit a bid, you can see the first year, it's about, the fee is about $9,500, or 20% above the fee that we paid for the most recent audit to Powers and Sullivan. And we do recognize that, you know, going forward with inflation and, you know, labor, the labor pool being very low, that we, we understand that, you know, most firms will probably increase prices over time. But you can see that, that increase would amount to about over 37,000 over the full three years. So we wanted to come back, get your input. We did want to point out a couple other suggestions of what things we can do. We could, one option would be to reissue the RFP and this time seek a proposal from Melanson Heath, which is a firm that last conducted an audit for the town back in FY13. And then another option would be to contact Powers and Sullivan and see if they would agree, if it would be acceptable to the Select Board, to see if they would sign a completely different manager and staff to conduct the FY23 audit. And then we go back out after the FY23 audit and try to solicit more proposals. But Darlene and I worked on it together. If she would like to add some comments, I'll defer to Darlene.
Good evening. Yeah, I was disappointed that other audit firms did not send, send in any bids or answer to our proposals. I mean, this audit firm, and we are reading over their proposal, is, I mean, is, CLA is fine with me if that's how we want to, if we want to go ahead with them. I don't have any objections on taking them. I'm not, I really don't really want to go back out and have Melanson and Heath. I felt they weren't a really great audit firm for us. We just, they, at the time, we were going through some school issues. I asked them to help us with those school issues that we were having, and we didn't get any help from them. So I just feel like they just weren't a very, very helpful audit firm for us when we were doing our audit, and things that I needed to get done, I felt just didn't happen. But it, I think probably the only two options would be is go ahead with this audit firm, or then maybe see if we can talk to Powers and Sullivan, bring in a whole new management team, a new partner with new auditors from their firm, and go for one year with them. I'm just going to let that, let you folks make that decision of what you want to do.
I thought we had talked about that before and felt that it wasn't in line with the intent of the charter, didn't we?
I think so.
Okay. In the, in the, the CLA proposal on page nine, there's some references. Did you guys check those, or do you not feel we need to?
We did not, I did not make individual calls. We can do that before the final award, but we wanted to, since it was only receiving the one proposal, we wanted, we thought it was the most prudent thing was to come back to the board and try to give it, just, you know, just to see that it, it was a very limited amount of responses, but.
Sure, yeah.
So, questions?
Yeah. I have a couple of questions. On page, on page three, it references the value-added service, the IT and risk management.
Excuse me, Pat, are you on the proposal, page three, or the RFP?
Yeah, the proposal, page three, yep. And I don't know, is, is that something that we need? Don't we have that covered by other, other vendors? So that would be one question, if maybe they would reduce their price from that. And then also on page 11 of the proposal, it specifically says, "Our last word on fees, we're permitted to serving you. If fees are deciding factor in your selection, we would appreciate the opportunity to discuss fur- thoroughly." So it sounds like they are willing to negotiate, to some extent, anyway.
Yeah, that's something we can look at. Regarding the first question, you know, we did not seek IT. I think it's something as a marketing thing, when they had initially sent us a questionnaire or had, or had asked us some initial questions, they had asked about IT, and we, we had responded that we had a, we had a recent cyber threat assessment performed. I think they were just trying to put it out there that, you know, in a lot, in a lot of communities, they may not have had an individual cyber threat assessment performed, and so this is almost like, you know, they're trying to say like they have a value-added service to a town by, by having a person with a lot of technical expertise on their, on their team. That's the way I interpreted it.
Yeah, I don't, I honestly don't, I don't think that the IT piece is, is part of their cost.
Oh, okay, so, okay, it's just.
I think that's just, they're just saying that we'd have, they would, that would actually be an added service if we wanted that.
I thought it said it was included.
Yeah, because I thought they.
Yeah, they included, but I don't think there's a premium, I don't think, in other words, if you said, "Don't do the IT piece," I don't think they're going to reduce their audit cost, is how I.
They're trying to give you a carrot.
Exactly, that's how I understand it. And we do know that IT, you know, IT security is such a pressing issue now for municipal finance and, you know, in a number of areas of municipal operations that I, you know, I think they're trying to get ahead of the curve in what's out there. But I don't think if you said to them, "Forget the IT thing," that they'll drop, I don't think that's a, an additional cost determinant of their proposal. Because when I look at it, Powers and Sullivan, who did a lot of the last three years, that was a fixed price for three years, my sense is, had they renewed, I don't think they were going to renew at the same price. So when you look at the delta, I don't think the delta is as great as, you know, what's our current price versus what's going forward. It would have been, what would it have been even with the current firm versus this going forward? And therefore, I don't think the delta is as great as the stock numbers that you see presented this evening.
And I'm also concerned with how many firms might be available to take on a new municipality considering the additional work that is out there. So.
And my only other thought with respect to the pricing, and I think it's probably in the noise, but if you are gonna open up discussions with them, if year one is front-loaded because of all the work they have to do to come onboard, then does the increment need to be as much going from year one to year two? That was the only thought that I had. But, and again, I think it's in the noise.
That might be your negotiating point on their fee comment that Pat made.
Yeah.
Is if you go to them and say, "Listen, you're going up equally each year, but there's a lot more expense to take us on the first year. Can you do something in year two and three?"
Yeah, we can definitely go back and have a talk with them, for sure.
I mean, to some extent, I feel like our hands are cuffed here. We have to move away from our, at least for a year. And just, and I know the last outside firm we had was two thousand thirteen, right? That was Heath and Melanson. So that's, that's a pretty good run without having a outside set of eyes. Not that I think we need it, but according to the charter, we do, so.
So is it, is it your, John and Darlene, is it your preference to move forward with CLA at this point?
Over Heath and Melanson?
I don't think we have an option. I mean, I mean, what else do we do? We didn't get anybody to bid. One vendor basically said that we, they, we would have needed to contact them last year so they could bid for this year. They seem to be, and I'm, I think maybe there's a lot of audit firms that are out there that are just really busy, maybe taking on more clients. And also, we don't have a lot to pick from. We've got three, really three audit firms, three or four, maybe, maybe four audit firms that could handle the size of Chelmsford. If you go around and you, you take a poll of, you know, you, if I go to my peers and ask them what audit firms they have, they have Powers and Sullivan, Melanson and Heath. Some of them have Roselli, who we did send an, we sent our RFP out to, and they did not respond. And then this CLA, that's it. That's really all you have when you're a large community, almost a city. All of these communities that I've, that I talk to, this is who they have. They have Melanson and Heath. I mean, I know it's in our charter that we don't, we have to change audit firms, but most towns that I spoke to have had the same audit firm for twenty, twenty-five, thirty years. Some, some town accountants say we, I've been with the town for over twenty-five years, we've never changed audit firms. We, we just keep, they've had, they've had Powers and Sullivan and they keep it. Nushobatak is one of those people. Nushobatak has had Powers and Sullivan for over twenty, twenty-something years. So, because there's not a big, there's just not a lot of audit firms. You have to keep changing audit firms every three years, and the work that goes into trying to do that is a lot, especially when you, you're basically getting the same results every year from this, from these audit firms. But that's, so I mean, I guess at this point, we don't really, based on our charter, we don't really have a choice, but we have to go with, with CLA.
Any other?
Yeah, I have one more question. They reference in their proposal the teammate software. Are you familiar with that? Any idea of, you know?
I've never heard of it.
You have not used that.
Okay.
All of the other firms that I've dealt with, they just, I basically send them a dump of my general ledger. They'll need three to four years of activity, three or four years of, and it's usually, it's not in an Excel spreadsheet, it's usually in an ASCII file. And then they take it and dump it into whatever, and can manipulate it into whatever system they have, because every, every audit firm uses a different system.
Okay, so that wouldn't be an issue as far as getting them the data in a different format?
No, I think they would probably just take it in an ASCII file and then manipulate it into what they, they need to, in an Excel spreadsheet or whatever system that they have.
The other thing I'll point out is on page three, they identify the team, the audit team for Chelmsford. The relationship professional, which is the head person, is Chris Rogers.
Page what?
On page three of the, right above where you are, right there. Chris Rogers is known, he was with part of another firm that we've known in the past, Rogers and Sullivan. So I'm comfortable knowing Chris's work. I have not worked with him directly, but I know of Chris and his work out there. So I don't feel that we're sort of going in blind, saying, you know, who are these people? Do they know what they're doing? And I'm sure Darlene and John probably, you know, are familiar with Chris as well, based on this conversation we had going into this meeting, that so it's, it's not like we're going in with an unknown person, you know. And I also think if you look at the communities that they serve as an audit company, they're large and comparable communities that you sit here and say, hey, wait a minute. Yeah, they're larger. So I'm comfortable with it, and I think, I think it's your only way, you know, reasonable way to proceed at this point in time. What I would suggest is that, you know, like you said, we kind of ask some movement on the price. If you, if you look at their cost of, you know, what they proposed for the three years, it comes up to one hundred and seventy-seven thousand. If it were just flat at their initial rate, it'd be one sixty-eight. So I think, I think you can move them off of the, like, it was noted by the chair, the three thousand increment each year. And, you know, if you want to give us a number not to exceed, I'm sure we can come back and do that. You know, it's somewhere between one sixty-eight if it was flat for that fee versus one seventy-seven. So I think it, you know.
They proposed one seventy-seven?
Yeah, if you, if you add up the fifty-six, the fifty-six, the fifty-nine, and the sixty-two, it comes up to one seventy-seven. And if you just took fifty-six times three, it'd be one sixty-eight. So to me, your ends are one sixty-eight versus one seventy-seven, basically, you know, a nine thousand dollar difference, the three thousand the first year and then six the second year. I think you could, you know, probably almost split the difference on that and say, hey, you know, you know, we'll, we'll come in at, you know.
Well, we could, I mean, we could, we could just, we could do the motion to authorize them to try to go negotiate.
Yeah, exactly.
That's all you need.
And, I mean, I'm, I don't know about the rest of the board, I'm comfortable with wherever you land. I don't, I don't feel it needs to come back.
Just trying to give you the parameters.
But, yeah.
No, I think we need to go forward.
Yeah.
Does anybody else feel it needs to come back to us after they talk to them, or?
I don't.
Okay.
Okay. Because they'll probably start when, April, Darlene? When do they usually start doing your initial?
Yep, they're gonna, they'll come in, they'll come in in April or late April, early May to do a pre-audit, so that's where they'll, but I think if we, I think what they'll probably do, if we go, if this gets approved, we'll notify them, we'll talk about, you know, finances with them. And they're probably gonna want me to send, start, you know, the data, the data they're gonna need, we'll start sending that right away so that they can start getting that into their system and looking at that. And then they'll probably, then they'll be coming in in late April, early May to do a pre-audit. That's where they, they spend a lot of time looking at some of our debt, and then just doing some procurement. They'll do their procurement work and some auditing with the procurement thing. And then our receipts are usually what they can do prior to my, on the close on June thirtieth. So they usually come in early to do a lot of that work. But I think though, once we go ahead and tell them that we're gonna go forward with them, they're gonna need all my information. I think they'll want to get that into their systems.
So we're approaching it within, normally it'd be two months. And so, like you said, there's even a closer lead time now to move forward.
Okay. Want to make a motion?
Do you want to make a motion? So, I'll make a motion that we, we didn't put a dollar on it. We give, we authorize, who's gonna negotiate it? Is it John or Darlene or Paul?
The town manager and John.
I'd be the town manager, because Darlene's the subject of the audit, so she shouldn't be the one signing the engagement. So I think it'd be, I.
All right, so we'll authorize the town manager, Paul Cohen, to engage Clifton Larson Allen, LLP, and negotiate the rate going forward with them.
I'll second the motion.
Well, aren't we also accepting, we're also accepting this proposal, correct? All right.
Well, we can't. At or below, I think it'd be, at or below the.
I said negotiate, but, okay, you want, because they're gonna go back and ask for a lower rate.
Right, but that kind of implies that he's coming back to tell us what it is, but I think the.
No, we're authorizing him to go negotiate.
I'll notify you of the end result, but, yeah, not to exceed.
Yeah, all right, so not to exceed.
Negotiate and award.
Negotiate and award, not to exceed one hundred and seventy-seven thousand over a three-year term.
I like that one better. I'll second that.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, five zero. Before John and Darlene leave, I just have a question for the board, this question about the charter. And Darlene mentioned that she's got data what other towns do. Is there any interest in putting this on like a future agenda item to talk about what are we, what we do versus what they do and whether there's any kind of charter change that the board wants to look at or not?
I would think.
I'm not suggesting that we need one, but it just keeps coming up.
Yeah, I think three years is too restrictive. I think you should push it out. I'm not saying, I wouldn't eliminate it, but I think.
No, but I think you'd gotta go to five at least.
Yeah.
So should we put it as a future agenda topic to talk about and look at some of the benchmark data that they have?
Yeah, I think so, because even the partner change sometimes can.
Okay, we're not gonna deliberate here.
I feel terrible we're doing to Darlene's.
Yeah, I know.
We only have to do it once every five years. I feel better.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, that'd be great.
Yep.
Thank you.
Paul, you're up next.
Yeah, thank you. A few items in my report this evening. The first one is, again, just providing some information regarding heavy commercial vehicle exclusions, or I guess in the layman's terms, truck exclusion routes, criterias, and so forth. In working with Chief Spinney and Assistant Town Manager Steve Maffetone, we provided you with some sort of baseline information as well as a graphical map. There's a large print over there, it doesn't show as well, you know, on the illustration, but really just want to get the information out in terms of, we're commonly asked about heavy commercial vehicle exclusions or truck exclusions in town, basically those trucks that are larger than two and a half tons. And this is all regulated by Mass Department of Transportation, that, you know, they are the oversight authority in which cities and towns have to get approval from the state to adopt exclusions. And Chelmsford's done that recently. The most recent one before this board was, was the ones by UPS, where we were having those impacts on the residential roadways, Carlton and Sprague, at, on, on the truck exclusion. The board approved those and, and those are in effect, and they're depicted on the map in the graphic. The criteria that the state has to adopt a heavy commercial vehicle exclusion or a truck exclusion is the alternate route has to lie within the community entirely. It either can go to it in the adjacent community, but only on a state highway, or it has to lie partially in the adjacent community, but you have to get the sign off or approval from the adjacent community. And then you have to submit an engineering study to meet the warrants, which means that it has to be a volume of at least five to eight percent of commercial vehicles on the roadway as part of traffic. In other words, is this a problem that has to be solved? And, because otherwise, the usage could detract and deteriorate the roadway. So basically, when we looked at the existing routes that are excluded, which are your numbered routes, and obviously the interstate, which is what you see, the deep red going through town, and then you, then identify the roads that connect to another community, which are arterial roads, and then, and then the gray area, which is sort of the commercial areas of town, it doesn't leave a lot left in terms of viable commercial exclusion routes in terms of, well, you know, where would you, you know, you know, create a commercial vehicle exclusion? And the one that came repeatedly was raised when we did the listening sessions was Swain Road. And I guess what we, the thinking is, is that if we're gonna look at an area, perhaps Swain Road would be the place to start, because, you know, it lies entirely within the town. We know it's having the impact from the quarries, and we're trying to, you know, protect the impacts from the quarries as well as deter the truck traffic from the quarries. And therefore, you know, if you then kept those trucks onto Dunstville Road and then went, you know, down towards Vinyl Square, and then would have to go onto Groton Road or through the square. Now, again, we realize that it's like water, you push water from one way, it's gonna go another way, it may not be well-received. So we're not asking for any votes on heavy commercial vehicle exclusions. But what we have done is we've reached out to NIMCOG. They've agreed that when the season arrives, meaning trucking season, we're out of the winter operations and when, because right now you can't plant the counters down anyway. And second of all, it's not representative of the heavy commercial trucks that we see, particularly from the quarries, which really doesn't arrive until April. But they, they agreed that they would put us on their.
Traffic counting.
Truck count come April. And also, it's probably helpful, because we haven't had data for Swain Road for a few years. So they've agreed to do that, and then we'll also work with the Chelmsford Police Department with their traffic safety team, you know, to look at a few other roadways in town to see if, you know, there are other areas that should be examined, that, some that were raised during the traffic listening sessions. So that's sort of what we, where we are this evening at this point. So I wanted to at least, you know, let you know that we've taken a deep dive, looked at our roadway network in town. And again, the group of us met with the chair and the vice chair to sort of, you know, prepare this for the board's consideration this evening. So with that, I'll stop, and if there's any additional points that need to be raised or questions that, you know, can be answered, and if, you know, I'll try to do that at this time. If not, we can, we'll proceed, as I mentioned, in terms of getting some counts on Swain Road as a start.
If you don't mind, I'd like to just add to the map you're looking at. I had received some questions from citizens asking for, you know, setting up a truck exclusion route or a truck, truck route around town. And a lot of samples have been emailed to me, and I started pulling samples from around and shared it with Steve Maffetone and Chief Spinney. And I think they did a great job laying out the town roads that are gonna make it really difficult to do what was sent to me by, or proposed by the residents, because they were really pulling up more rural towns that maybe only had one numbered road running through the center of town or something. And it was not what we're dealing with here in Chelmsford with, which is basically, you know, I call them those three major highways, because I cut Route Three and a Half there where it crosses and a little one comes back again, dissecting the town. So I think they did a great job, you know, going each road, laying it out, kind of testing it against, could you put a traffic exclusion or a truck exclusion up, and yes, no, and why? And then looking at where the flows would pour over to on other streets. So I think the Ledge Road or Swain Road is a great test run here going forward. We want to be careful that we don't, you know, open a can of worms here, that you get every resident in town crying for traffic counts and truck exclusions. But there are definitely some places in town that they can hopefully give some relief to residents.
And, thank you, Ken. Paul, do you also just want to explain the yellow line that's over the red one, that that's not something we can go do today, that that's a grandfather?
Yeah, yeah.
So the red lines, we can't do truck exclusions, but this one's an exception.
Yeah, years back, prior to the current criteria, North Road was deemed to be a truck exclusion in town from basically the center to Drum Hill. And one of the things that was achieved, and if you've been on 495 North recently, they have clearly identified with the new signage out there that commercial trucks are excluded from North Road. There's a sign prior to the rest area that says, you know, the one-mile exit warning, big white letters on the bottom, and then you go a half mile on the other side of the exit, of the rest area, and there's a, where it says a half-mile exit, and there's another sign. And then as you go towards the exit, on the right-hand side, there's another sign that says, "No trucks next exit." And then at the exit, there's, you know, so.
And those are all new.
Those are all new, as part of the re-signage. And so at this point, there's no, there's no justification how a commercial truck could take that exit and, you know, plead ignorance or what have you, as may have been in the case in the past.
Is that added at your behest?
We, we had reached out in time to MassDOT about the, you know, truck exclusions. I'm not gonna claim credit for it, because there's also been some other signage changes. For example, if you go to the Westford exit, they actually note that you can get to 110 in Westford now if you're on 495 North. So I, all I can say is. So I, all I can say is we reached out, the changes came, whether it's causal or coincidental, I don't know. But the good news is it's clearly identified and marked, so I'm, you know.
But my, my point also is that we cannot do truck exclusions on any of the red roads on this map. And the only reason that one is there is because it's historical and it's grandfathered.
Exactly.
So.
Just seeing you say that about the signs, I noticed in last weekend coming up, as I was getting off, I'm like, wow, they really did add these enormous dropdowns on these signs. I actually think they're low enough that a truck might hit them if they tried.
Right. And, you know, because I know there's always been chatter about the, using that as a cut through to get the Route three north. And clearly, you know, and clearly now there's, there's no justification for it. I mean, there's, you know, if, and if somebody goes off that road, you know, unless they, you know, there's, there's no, there's no allowance for it. And so the police know about it and Chief Spinney's informed me that, you know, he's notified, you know, that the patrols that, to keep an eye on it. And, and I can say, again, I, I travel that route daily. I am not seeing, I know it's a short sample size, but I'm not seeing, I'm not seeing commercial vehicles in front of me or behind me on the off-ramp or, or, you know, as I'm traveling daily.
From the other route.
What's that?
Like the rotary coming the other way.
Yeah.
Signs there too.
There's some signs there too. They aren't as, they don't jump out at you as much as these do.
Well, because it's not just to North Road, not through. People can get up there for other things too.
Right.
I'm biting my tongue.
And even the one from the center is the other way, you know, because the problem is, is you've got to give enough notice for them to travel to an alternative route. And the problem is, how do you sign that at Drum Hill and also in the center? Particularly the center is more challenging, because you've got to give them a runway to, to exit.
Yeah, my, I mean, my, you know, my office is there, so I do see it from time to time. But I have seen twice in the last two weeks, a truck come up, get off the highway, come like it's going to Route four and then stay in the middle lane and get back on the highway. So I mean, there are signs. They're not as prevalent as they are on 495 North, but.
Yeah, I see it multiple times a day, so.
All right. The next item I have is draft spring annual town meeting warrant. Two weeks from tonight, you'll be, you're scheduled to sign the warrant for the spring annual town meeting. So at, at that point, I'll give you the final version. I, I have the final draft this evening and there are some changes from the previous draft and I'll point them out to you. They're, they're all additions. I have installed the placeholder, what's now Article nine, which for the purchase of One Bureka Road, 44 Central Square for the Town Center Municipal Parking Lot. Again, they're placeholders that they, you know, you can always take no action if, but, but it's trying to get it out there. The second one is one that I've, you know, been chasing and with, with Gary Prisketti, our DPW Director, and Jay Lang, our Superintendent of Schools. And this has to do with the reconstruction of the Chelmsford High School tennis and basketball courts, as well as the future of the McCarthy Middle School tennis courts. And we don't see how they, if we don't do this, get the approval at spring town meeting, we're going to have a big problem with CYBL and other uses of those facilities. We've been sort of patching them for the last couple of years. And it was almost a case where, two years ago, prior to COVID, they were not going to run the program because of the conditions of the courts. And it's at the case now where they need to be reconstructed. So that would be a borrowing. You're probably talking, I know you're, the, the number when I spoke to Gary Prisketti this morning is 1.4 million. So what you would do is you'd, you'd entirely remove the existing surfaces, because they're at the end of their useful life. And then reinstall the, the tennis courts and basketball courts, you know, at, at the high school. And also there'd be provisions for pickleball, because we know that's, you know, common these days. And then the future of the McCarthy courts is they would be removed, but we would, we would actually expand the parking for the police station and the McCarthy school there. We would not reconstruct the tennis courts at the McCarthy. There just isn't a demand for them and utilization of them. And there really is a parking constraint at the police station and the overflow at the McCarthy Fields. So that, that's what would happen there. So that's, that's the capital under that article.
So does that, does that have to go back through the capital planning committee?
No, no, this is a standalone, separate article. It's.
Because it's been on their list before.
Right. It, because we're trying to identify everything and, you know, this is just something that it, I, the town could choose not to fund it, but I think, I, I think it's responsible to bring it to the town, because.
It's in dire streets.
Yeah, you've got to get there. And you really want to start this at basically the end of August and get it done by November. And the problem is if we don't do it this time, then you're trying to get two more seasons on those courts. And I just don't see how we're going to.
What are you going to make them out of?
Yeah, we'll, we'll do an add alternate for concrete as well as, but the baseline would be bituminous. And then the add alternate would be for the concrete. Article 12 is, is the request of the superintendent about, about accepting local option to establish a special education reserve fund. What that would mean is you would, money would be placed into the account, but it can only be removed by a joint vote of the select board and school committee. This came out of municipal reform a few years back. We're now at the case now. Where the superintendent brought to my attention that we're, he believes that it's a, it would be a good reserve source for the community. So again, this is a local option. It doesn't appropriate any money, doesn't, it just allows the town to accept the statute, which allows the school committee to place funds into a special education reserve, but they can only be voted out by the select board and the school committee. So it's, it's basically, it's another way of meeting unforeseen costs for special education services in the future. Article 17 is a request from Pete Padula at Chelmsford Telemedia. He's seeking to use some of the telemedia reserves, because remember they were revolving enterprise fund, to do upgrades and enhancements to the studios. He just thinks that they're at the end of their useful life. And with the new facility that's built over at the McCarthy Middle School, the new auditorium, he would now have the ability to run everything from the, the studios as well. So it's a case where they need new technology, but they also would incorporate the ability to work remotely from the McCarthy auditorium, which I, I think we're going to see next Wednesday in its first municipal use for the planning board's continued hearing regarding Riveneck Road, as well as the PAC and the studio. So again, that's not a tax allocation. It's just from the balance in the, in the telemedia enterprise fund. Article 25 is a community preservation article that's additioned and it's coming up tomorrow night in this room for the Community Preservation Committee. It's to receive some community preservation funds towards the reconstruction of the playground at the center of school. There'll also be funds contributed from the PTO and other monies put into that project. So it, this is one where the CPC would be a leveraging account. And then the final five are 30 through 34, and they're grant and easement articles. The first two are from the Conservation Commission, and this has to do with the Warren Pole property. The, basically the inherited easements that go across there, one at Parker Road. And then the other one was over at, I mean, I'm drawing a blank, the, the other location was at Parker Road and at Hall Road, where basically there are paved driveways, and I put a shed in one case, that were sort of handshake or just happened over time with the previous owner of the property. The commission is to have a non-exclusive easement, you know, for the property owners so that they can maintain their existing paved surface and the right to passage on that. So this is the case where the town grants an easement as opposed to obtains an easement. So that's at the request of the Conservation Commission. Articles 32 and 33 come out of the planning board. One was the acceptance of, these are acceptance of easements. One is for emergency access at the former Glenview site, which is now condos, as we know, on, at 15 Harvard Street. Part of that approval by the planning board was an emergency access easement onto the property. So at 15 Harvard Street. So this is one where the town accepts the easement, even though the planning board has already accepted the plan and it's been constructed. It's a, it's a, you know, a formal transition towards a permanent recorded easement for emergency access to the site. And then the other one at North Star was a sewer easement that was part of the planning board approval for, for that project. And, and if you followed that case, that was a case of trying to deal with the, the significant cost of, of sewerage for that project. And so this again is, is accepting an easement for, for that purpose. It, which again, the, the project was at 240 Groton Road. And then the last one is a disposition of a Summer Street wetland parcel. This is one that we've been, we've been approached by the abutters to a .73 acre town tax possession parcel on Summer Street that was acquired in the eighties, 1980s. And it's mostly wet. And it's basically sat unused. And for whatever reason, the two abutters have reached out to the Board of Assessors and asked if they could obtain ownership of the property. We first reached out on our side to the Conservation Commission and said, do you have any interest or is there any value to the property? And they said, no, it's all wet. And they're sort of scratching their heads as to why the abutters want to acquire the property.
Who are the abutters?
The, oh, Cleven, Mary, Mary Cleven is one of the abutters and then her immediate neighbor. And I think periodically over time, she's always inquired about this property. And so she's asked on this one. So the thought is we throw it on the warrant. Obviously we'll bring it before you, we'll bring it before the finance committee, we'll bring it before the town meeting. I for the life of me don't understand it, we quite frankly, because.
Exactly. On Summer Street is it?
By 129, obviously.
Yeah.
What's the question, Ken?
It's not.
Where exactly on Summer Street is it?
It's right on the edge, as Pat noted, right by 129.
Yeah, because Cleven's live right at the corner of Summer Street and 129.
So is it right behind their house where that gate is?
Yeah. And it's wet. And it's not the area for the Riverwalk, you know, we thought maybe all the, because that was the first question we got from the commission is, oh, you know, there's always been this concept of a, of a Brookwalk. It's not on the Brookwalk. And so I don't see the threat of development. I also don't see the benefit of ownership, because if anything they've been doing out there all these years, nobody's been impeding them anyway.
Especially if it's wet.
Yeah. And, and so what we would do is we would get the town meeting to authorize, you know, the select board to dispose of the property. We would then issue a procurement, a disposition procurement under Mass 30, Chapter 30B of the Procurement Act, accept seal proposals and then come back to you for the board, if, if all this is granted, for you to have the final disposition in terms of what price and.
How is it different than a piece of property we take for taxes that we then send to auction?
It, it, it isn't, but the problem is that so much time has lapsed on this that we, and, and we had John speak to our auctioneer and, and our, our tax title attorney, and they recommended going to town meeting to get approval on this. And I'll have John speak to this, because John's been, been pursuing this, because, explain this, John.
Yes. So a normal route would be to do a public auction. The, the issue with this property is because of the wet nature of it, and it's really going to be only of interest to the, those two abutters. And they've indicated that they wish to buy it as, you know, together. You're, you're most likely going to receive one bid. So there would be almost no, and I don't want to prejudge an auction, but I would say there's almost going to be no competition. So it's almost, you know, if I was to, if we conducted an auction, even though we, we would, you know, we'd, we'd notify all the abutters and do all the legal notices required to do under state law. But in all practicality, we would just end up keep lowering the bids and lowering and hoping to get an opening bid. And that would be the end of it, so.
And we'd come to you with a floor price. I mean, we know what it's assessed at. And then we would ask you for a floor and, you know, they'll, they'll, they'll either accept it or not accept it. But if they don't accept it, I don't see how their life changes, quite frankly. This, this one puzzles me. I don't, I've been sort of trying to figure out a motive in terms of, of why they would want to do this. Because, you know, is it a gateway to like a 40B or, you know, we always, you always tend to sort of like, well, what is somebody trying to get after? And you know Mary Cleven longer than I have, Pat. I don't think that that's her motivation. I don't think it's her heirs motivation or anything. It just seems like that they have this parcel that's a little dry behind them, but mostly wet, and they just seem to want to control it. Although I don't see what the benefit would be. And honestly, we, that's another down gradient site. I'd be, I, you know, not that they'd have any liability, but why would you even want to deal with that? Because as you know, there've been, we've done, there've been test wells and other stuff on that, because everything that flows down the Brook flows down there too. But anyway, that's the request. So again, that's, that's, those are all the changes from the warrant. And so barring any direction from the board, I will bring you a, I will send this to council for a legal review. We'll send the borrowing articles to bond council for a legal review of wording. And then I'll come back to you with the final warrant for your approval and signature in two weeks.
Paul, at the, the last planning board meeting, when they were talking about the Oddfellows Fist Campus and splitting out the parcels, there was a suggestion made about a couple of zoning bylaw changes that would be striking out some language. And I don't remember the details, but it was basically to help tighten up the intent of what Center Village wanted in terms of parking and other things. And I thought that they, I thought what I understood was they were going to, some of the planning board members had requested that it be put on the agenda next Wednesday, so they could decide if they wanted to put something on the warrant or not.
The problem with next Wednesday is, is I'm going to be giving you the final warrant next Thursday.
I understand. I'm just saying.
No, so what I'm saying is if that's the intent, what, what we could do, and we've done this in the past, we could schedule a special with the annual and then.
Right, concurrent, concurrent with it.
Concurrent with that. So I'm not saying that door is closed. All I'm saying is it, it really would be a hardship to get that approved and town council approval.
Well, yeah, I just want to make you aware that.
I think that'd be a way of doing it.
There was a conversation. I don't know where it's going to go.
Okay.
So just to note, Paul, on Article 35, you referenced the Board of Selectmen.
Ah, on street acceptances, thank you. And I'm not even sure if, if 35 will remain. Thank you for that. Because that's one I'm, I'm waiting for the direction from council on the whole issue of Charles Way. I think it's, in speaking to council, he thinks this probably is, in our discussion, we think this is probably something that's going to go towards fall town meeting, not spring. I just don't see how you get everything that needs to be done in time for April town meeting. So if it does, if it does remain, I'll, I'll make that change.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. I just have a couple of grant award announcements to formally notify you and the community. Since our last meeting on the 28th of January, we received notice from the Department of Energy Resources that the town of Chelmsford was awarded the Green Communities Competitive Grant Application Award in the amount of $17,782. And that was for steam trap repairs at the South Row Elementary School, transformer at the high school, $5,000 towards a hybrid vehicle for the town, and $2,180 towards building operator certification training for the town. So I want to thank Gary Prisketti and Melissa Joyce, who, working with Kathleen Canavan, who submitted that application. And then also we, we received notice through the media that the Baker Administration, the first week of February, has made announcements regarding the electric vehicle fast charging stations grant award, which is awarded to municipal governments and privately owned properties as part of the whole effort to increase fast charging, electric vehicle charging stations across the Commonwealth. And we were accepted into the program for the installation of two charges at the Chelmsford Forum. So that had a value of $84,152, which is obviously not only for the charging stations, but all the related work in, you know, in terms of tying it into power and everything for those stations.
How fast are they?
Uh, I think it's like the half hour charge that you see. It's, it's one, I think the President of the US spoke about this, this thing last week and, and his effort as well is there is this push. And, you know, if you watch the Super Bowl, you saw commercials for electric vehicles. So that there is this push that if in order to make that viable for the climate issues, you have to have the charging stations. And, you know, and realistically, they think a half hour or 40 minute one may work if you have them to basically locate it across the interstates and near interstates. And that's why the Forum was a attractive location because of its proximity to Route three. And then the next one I have is to do with the Center for the Arts. As the board's aware, and I did speak to Susan Gates last week, she still will be retiring in a couple of months at the end of May, in roughly three months. And in thinking how best to move forward, and I've had discussions with the chair on this. this, I've reached out to see if, is there a private market for this? Because when I look at the options and, and you've had the options obviously presented to you, the option would be to replace Susan with another director employed by the town, um, to try to achieve what she couldn't achieve in a decade. And I'm kind of, I think we were all sort of a little skeptical of like, how is this going to take place? Because if you couldn't do it, Susan, why do you think somebody else is going to be able to do it? Because I, because I don't think we think the fault was with Susan. The fault and the constraint there is the capacity of the facility. I, I had a site visit with a facility operator who operates facilities in the region and in the New England area and the biggest constraint in that facility is that you aren't at seat capacity. Uh, and, and if you saw that, and if you remember some of the questions from Susan, she'd have a hard time breaking even, even if she sold every ticket to every event. So the thinking is, is there's got to be something more to this to, to see if it's viable. And so looking at that is, I think what you've got to do is make it a, a public facility, meaning performing arts center, maybe a, you know, conference center, you know, somehow involving catering services, maybe weddings that are tied on the common, some of which the things are done currently, as seeing if it's viable. And so what I'd like to do when I drafted, I, I obtained the, a draft proposal that was from the Town of Lexington that has a bigger facility than ours, but it, it gave an illustration on how to do it. I also looked at what Lowell did with the Lowell Memorial Auditorium, again, much larger facility in that case. And so I prepared a draft RFP that I would like to issue, um, and then, you know, get, get it out in the next couple of weeks and then see if we can get a, a, somebody on board by April, um, to, you know, make a transition perhaps by June 1st with Susan departing in May to see if this is viable. So what I've done is I've left it very vague and to allow somebody the flexibility to see if it works. So for example, you know, what I, what I thought of was, okay, well, you, you want to keep it as a viable art center and recognizing you're entering COVID, so I put a minimum of 20 performances per year, which is basically every other week if you start looking at holidays and other stuff. And then basically providing flexibility for them and, and obviously you, you, this isn't just who gives you the lowest price, you look at their experience, their value and you, and you make a determination without looking at what money they would provide the town, um, and to see that if, if an RFP might be the way to move forward with the Chelmsford Center for the Arts facility. So prior to me doing this, I want to come back to the board, um, to at least get your input and, and hopefully approval on that direction. The other approach obviously would be to put a job description, which we have drafted, for an executive director to run the facility. I just think that this, this has a greater chance of success. Now, I'm not guaranteeing success on, on either outcome, but I think if we, you know, we have a good facility, we would still own the building, we would still maintain the infrastructure of the building, i.e. the roof, the elevator, the boiles and so forth. But if somebody could go in there, much like Susan has done, and carry the operating costs, i.e. utilities, uh, and make it a facility, we'll, we'll see if, you know, we'll see if it flies. If not, then I think there's, there's lessons to be taught. One is the lessons of what Susan's experienced over a decade, as well as what the private market may be telling us. And again, I think the big constraint there is capacity. Um, you know, we have, we have good, good, you know, strengths to, for the facility because of its location, its size, its character, there's parking, you know, in the area, um, and, and I think, I think it's worth a shot. And so I think this is how I'd like to proceed at this time, rather than just throwing an ad in the paper for an executive director, uh, and as well as, you know, you need that technical person who's doing it. So with that, I'll stop and answer any questions that the board might have.
I have-
Comments?
Couple of quick questions. We had got a town resident had sent us an email asking about whether maybe someone at the high school or high school students could run this under hospitality, but I'm wondering, I don't think we have that type of a program at the hospitality, I mean, at the high school, but would, would the tech have something like that, where they would-
I can reach out to the tech to see if they could do it, I, I just-
I would think they have a hospitality program.
They have a hospitality program, I just don't know if they, and they also have a, a performing arts program at the school. I just, I just don't know if their scope could expand to this type of facility.
That would be kind of neat.
Yeah, do they have the bandwidth beyond what they're currently doing? But I'll, I'll reach out to-
Or, or if we, or if we brought in an outside contractor, maybe that's a relationship they could set up to help them.
Supportive.
Exactly, supportive, exactly.
Because, because part, part of what we're trying to do is solve the, the P and all piece here and get it out of the red. So if, if having a hospitality program at a, at the tech couldn't address that, but it would be a good learning experience, then maybe if we bring a contractor and they can work with them.
You could, you could do something like every year you have, well, you could have a teacher dedicated to it and then have the students turn over every year, you know, that run it.
No, I'll reach, I'll, I'll, I'll reference that as a resource, but I'll also reach out to Dr. Pigeon to see if she has any thoughts before I-
I mean, we do, you know, have a good part of the budget there.
Yeah.
Still have a high cost of utilities in there?
Yeah, although, you know, that, that is, you know, it, it's most, but we are trying to do some electrical upgrades to the, to the building. The problem is, is it's, it's a hundred plus year old building, so it, it just wasn't built for today's standards with the, you know, you've got your HVAC in the roof and you, you know, it's, it's just not tightly insulated, you don't have controls.
Heat pumps too, right?
Yeah, yeah, exactly. So it's, it's a tough facility.
So, so Paul, is the model that you said, and I read that they'll assume the utilities cost, we assume the, the cost for maintaining the building.
Yeah.
Is the, is the model that the way they make money is making that building successful and then we get a piece, a part of, of, you're asking them to recommend some kind of a-
Revenue share.
A revenue share.
Right.
But we're not paying them to do, to run the facility. We're offering this as an opportunity for them to make it work and they, they're incentivized to, to make it work because that's how they make their money.
Exactly.
It's almost like an enterprise fund, but-
Like a country club.
Yeah, like the country club. I mean, that's what we do at the country club. We provide them with the facility, we maintain the building, they operate the golf course and-
And the skater.
Yeah, I mean, and it's kind of the Forum as well. I think it's trying to use that same model and, and see, I just think it's our best shot. I mean, we've never tried to run a golf course, we've never tried to run the Forum and, and I think that this is worth a shot. And again, you know-
I think it's a good idea.
You, you, I'm not, you know, you've got to recognize the constraint, just like there are constraints on a public nine hole golf course and, you know, on a one rink facility. And so I think that's how we do, we do it, so.
Is there anybody who's not in favor of Paul pursuing this?
Okay.
I think it's overdue.
All right, thank you. I'll, I'll reach out to council, have them review the documents and, and the other thing.
Thanks, Paul.
And then the last thing I have is I do have the sewer flows from January, for, the sewer flow for January was down from the prior two years. So, you know, again, we're monitoring on a monthly basis. We've also noticed other months where it was high, higher this year than previous years and so we are keeping an eye on it. And as I noted today and I sent you the story and I think this, it'll be in the, the Lowell Sun tomorrow, you know, Representative Trahan, you know, was in Lowell at the wastewater plant today announcing the availability of funding for wastewater plants, you know, particularly with the combined sewer overflow, but I, as the board is aware, I've conveyed my concerns, I heard directly, that there were also capacity concerns that, you know, are, exist in communities, including at that plant. So, so just wanted to follow up on that. Um, so that's all I have under my report this evening.
That brings us to the earmark for park improvements, item number 10.
Yeah, I, I, I wanted to get this for the board's direction. I did, from the last meeting, we, in working with Representative Golden's office and also talking to the state, we're, we're now established and available to move forward with the use of the funds. They've sort of set up accounts and all that type of stuff, um, on all the funding from the program. And it's basically $200,000 for park improvements in the Town of Chelmsford, uh, in the earmark. And as I mentioned at an earlier meeting and we held off till George was, uh, the Select Board member Dixon was here this evening, it's been long been a target to, to improve the, the surface of Varney Field, which is the home field of Chelmsford High School baseball and also is a, a, a amenity for that neighborhood. We recently completed the pickleball and tennis court off of Varney Ave and resurfaced Varney Ave. A few years ago, we did the beach house as well as the new basket, outdoor basketball court and retaining wall and worked with the North Chelmsford Water District on the parking area. And then it, and also there's funding in this year's thing to redo the playground at, at Varney. And so I think the last major piece, um, is the playing field surface at, you know, for the ball field. So I, I, I guess I'm looking for a formal vote from the board to, uh, target those funds to that area and then I'd like to work with George and, and the high school athletic director and others on, in terms of the improvements that could be done out there to bring it to its proper condition. And 200,000 should get us a good ways in terms of really going out there and, and rebuilding the, the field surface. I don't know if George has any thoughts, you know?
I mean, I, somebody has to look at, I mean, 200 seems like a lot of, a good amount of money, but when you get, you know, you got drainage and you got, I don't know how much, how level the field is, you know what I'm saying? It's just, over the years, it's been filled in certain areas and it seems like the infield's up here and the outfield's down here, you know, and-
Yeah.
I mean, somebody has to take a good look at it first, see how close the 200 is to getting a lot of the work done, you know? And then maybe somebody could donate some additional money or time or equipment, whatever, you know, because it really would be a great asset if it was really set up the way it should be up there.
Paul, what about the 50,000 that RV pledged that went into the general fund? Can that come back for this?
We could go to town meeting and ask for it. I mean, it, it flows to the general fund, we didn't have a means, but we could ask it. You know, if we come back and, and like you said, George says we need another 50 or whatever at the fall town meeting, we can ask for 50,000 for free cash to do that, sure. But I think I just wanted directions of, you know, I don't want to be going off without saying, yeah, this is where the board wants the, the monies to be, you know, to be directed. And so I think you're right, George is right, we, we get an engineer out there, um, and, and see, and see what needs to take place, but then at least we have the 200 as, you know, a placeholder and say, yeah, we, we can pay for some engineering work and then we can commence some work and then, like you said, see where we are.
You'll work with George on that?
Yeah. And, and, yeah, and, and like you said, I think we bring in, like we did the last time, bring in the athletic director at the high school because they're the users of the field and, and, you know, try to, you know, move, move it forward. And anyone else, George, you think, you know, should be involved?
They don't have commissioners over there like they used to, they used to have commissioners.
So what do you need a motion?
Yeah, that would be helpful, yeah, to, to authorize a town manager to proceed with improvements at Varney Play, at Varney Playground, uh, Field, Field Surface.
All right, so I'll, I'll make a motion to, uh, give approval to the town manager to, uh, use the budget earmarked $200,000 towards investigating improvements to the Varney Field and Playground.
I'll second the motion.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye, five zero.
Thank you. I should call it Ayat Field, George, I'm that-
Yeah, well, it's part of his Ayat Field and, but it is Varney Playground with Ayat Fields.
Yeah, I don't want to, I don't want to-
And maybe-
Start off on the wrong foot by missing-
Oh, maybe it would be nice to have one of his sons-
Exactly.
Get involved a little bit, you know what I mean?
Okay, thank you.
Okay, that brings us to the meeting minutes. I'm going to ask for each one of these if there are any other comments before we take the motions so we don't have to make multiple motions. So January 24th, is everybody okay with those? Let's do a motion then.
I'll make a motion to approve the regular, uh, meeting minutes from the January 24th Select Board meeting.
I'll second the motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, five zero. January 31st?
Well, I have to stay.
Oh, I'm sorry.
He's going to abstain.
Abstentions?
Abstained.
He was, he was at that one.
You were, you were there, yeah, you were-
Was he there the whole one?
Okay, so that is, that is a five zero, you're okay for the portion you were there?
Although on that one, I did step out for what it's worth.
We, yeah, but we don't, that was just a recusal, right?
Yep.
Yeah, we don't.
Just making sure everybody knows.
No. All right, so January 31st, are there any additional comments or things that got missed? Okay, I'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes from the Select Board meeting for January 31st, 2022.
I'll second the motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Abstentions?
I think I have.
Okay, we have four in favor and Board Member Dixon abstains. Okay, the next is the announcement. We have an announcement on the determination of continued non-disclosure of previously approved and withheld executive session minutes. Get comfortable, I have to read all of these. So the following minutes were deemed, um, to be continued to be held. October 1st, 2018, in the year 2019, April 8th, July 8th, segments one and three, September 23rd, segment one, and October 7th. In the year 2020, January 27th, segment one, March 5th, segment one, June 1st, segment three, August 31st, September 28th, and November 2nd. And in the year 2021, May 3rd, May 10th, segment two, May 17th, May 25th, June 1st, June 14th, June 28th, June 29th, July 22nd, July 26th, August 9th, segments one through seven, August 23rd, September 7th, segments one and two, September 13th, October 4th, segments one through three, October 25th, segments one and three, November 15th, segment two, November 29th, and December 13th, which was a joint meeting with the school committee. That brings us to liaison reports and referrals. Pat, do you have anything?
Uh, yes, I have a couple of things. Uh, first of all, I want to congratulate, uh, three members of the Chelsford Police Department upon their recent promotions. We have a new Sergeant, Nick Zaminsky, we have a new Lieutenant, Jeff Bernier, and we have a new Deputy Chief, Colin Spence. Congratulations to each of these gentlemen, I'm sure they'll do very well in their new positions. A couple of library things. Um, the, the one book for this year is now available at the library if you want to stop by and pick it up. The title of the book is On Earth, We're Briefly Gorgeous and it is by a Vietnamese-American poet named Ocean Vuong. Um, and she will be at the library sometime in probably April to talk about her book, so I will let you know when that comes closer. And also, um, in honor of Black History Month, there is a, an art exhibit in the meeting room in the lobby of the library with, um, artwork by local artists. So if you have a chance, uh, stop by and check that out.
Okay, George? Mark?
No.
Ken?
I'm good.
Um, I have a few from the school committee. Uh, the book, the budget that the superintendent reviewed is posted on the public schools website and they will be having a public hearing on that budget on March 1st. Also, on Monday, the school committee will be meeting to discuss what Chelmsford will do regarding the mask policies in the school, considering some of the state mandates that are going to expire on the 28th of February. The Finance Committee detailed budget reviews with the departments are in process and , uh, the public can watch for the agendas posted on the town website for Thursdays in February and March when they'll be convening as a committee to discuss them. From the Planning Board, the Riverneck Road proposed development public hearing will be continued on February 23rd at 7:00 PM at the McCarthy Middle School Auditorium. Zoom access is being planned for those who wish to speak at the hearing. If you only intend to watch and not speak, um, you're being asked to please just watch the broadcast live on Verizon Comcast or Chelmsford Telemedia Livestream and not on Zoom just to help manage the Zoom bandwidth. And, uh, the Planning Board, if you hadn't watched their last meeting, also just wanted the public and the Select Board to know that they are in support of evaluating, um, purchasing additional parking in the town center. From the Vinyl Square Strategic Action Plan Committee, they are looking for residents or business owners who would like to be part of their Concept Plan Implementation Committee. So if you have any interest in that or in joining the committee in general, please reach out to them. And the Age Friendly Committee is, um, wants to just welcome the new Deputy Chief of Police, Colin Spence, to their Age Friendly Committee, and they look forward to working with him as well. I had a question about a future agenda topic for the board. We received an email about a week ago regarding whether or not we were going to pursue having an LGBTQIA listening session. If you remember, this was something that came up, um, that I brought up because it was suggested to me during our Goals Work Session last August or September. suggested to me during our goals work session last August or September, and we had said that we wanted to try to connect them with the DEI committee, and I did speak briefly to Latasha over the weekend, and she said that they weren't aware of it and hadn't discussed it. So, I just wanted to find out, is this something that the board is interested still talking about at some point, or should, can I put it on a future agenda? Or perhaps invite a representative from the DEI committee to talk to us about how they would suggest we handle it, because I think that's all interrelated. That was the-
Did you talk about this before?
We talked about it when we did the goals. It was on one of the flip charts, and we said we weren't going to formalize it as a goal, because we-
But were you going to bring it to DEI, or bring it to-
Yeah, I don't, Pat, were you going to bring it to, I don't know, I, I, something felt-
I mean, I can, I, I didn't, yeah, I didn't think, I'm, I think it is-
Because you were the liaison at the, at that time, and I just, because I, I spoke to Mara Snow, who was the originator of the email, and I just made a quick call after I talked to her, to Latasha, and Latasha said that they, it hadn't been on their radar. But I do think it's worth at least us discussing at some point, so maybe if the board, if it's okay with the board, we'll follow up with DEI, and then maybe put it on a future agenda of, if there, if there's a need for a listening session, we'll work, if, if DEI wants to be involved in it, we'll just do it in cooperation with them. Does that make sense?
Sure, I was just asking.
Okay. So, Pat, do you, do you want to follow up with them as the liaison, or?
Sure, I can do that.
I don't see any press, so I will take a motion.
We're going to, we're probably supposed to have someone else here for this? Was Paul Harvey coming for this?
He was here for the last discussion on the topic. I, I talked to him this morning, he said he didn't know about it, but-
Yeah, I didn't know if he was coming. I saw your communication with him today, I didn't know if he was coming later in the me, evening, or-
He said he wasn't, he, he had already been committed for this evening.
So, are we still discussing this?
I, I think we should at least discuss it, yeah.
All right, so I'll make a motion to, to move into executive session to consider the purchase of real property at 1 Billerica Road in 44 Central Square, to review the executive session minutes as presented, and review the previously approved and withheld executive session minutes for potential release as presented, not to return to open session.
I'll second the motion.
You have a motion and a second. Pat?
Aye.
George?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Ken?
Aye.
And I vote aye.
Okay.